Let's see, determining a quorum. All members except Mr. Carter are present. So we have a quorum. Approval of the minutes, review and approval of the minutes. I review and send out a comment. Do I have a motion on approving the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Minutes are approved. Okay, we proceed to the business part of the meeting. Rezoning requests. RR number 925, property owner Blythewood Development, applicant Chip Wyatt, location 15 North Harley O, South Carolina, 29448. Request zoning change from CG, General Commercial District, to AR, Agricultural Residential District, TMS number 008-00-00-048. Total acres, 31.83. Who's going to pick that one up?
So this is a request, like you said, to rezone approximately 32 acres at this interchange here of I-26 and Highway 15 from General Commercial to the Agricultural Residential District, with the intent to extract mineral resources. The subject property has frontage along Duncan Chapel, as well as along Highway 15 and frontage on I-26. A majority of the properties in this area are zone General Commercial or Commercial Light Industrial, which is in alignment with the Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map, which designates this area as employment-mixed-use. This designation promotes job-oriented uses with a mix of higher-density residential development and aims to establish settlements with high levels of connectivity between residences and businesses, services, and amenities. Staff does anticipate this area to develop with those large-scale employment uses, like those allowed in the CG District, including large and small-scale retail, professional offices, gas stations. The CG District does not allow for single-family residential development and only allows for multifamily conditionally as a part of a commercial development. The AR District, on the other hand, while allowing resource extraction, is considered a lower-intensity zoning district primarily for the development of agricultural uses and large-lot, single-family detached residential development. Given the future land use designation, staff does not find that the AR District is compatible with the Comprehensive Plan. While developing residentially is not the intent of the applicant, a rezoning to the AR District does increase the possibility of development that is incompatible with the plan. It creates the opportunity for the property to be developed as a low-density residential development. Even if the intended use for resource extraction is established, once the mining operations are complete, reclamation of the property could render it unsuitable for future economic development. Additionally, staff would like to note that resource extraction is a conditional use in the AR District with conditions that include some large buffers against both developed and undeveloped land, which may be difficult to accomplish on this site just given these property widths here and these kind of awkward property lines. The establishment of resource extraction on the property would require appropriate permitting from SEDES and a county resource extraction permit.
Thank you.
Staff recommends denial.
Thank you. Did you receive any comments prior to the meeting?
No, we did not.
Okay. Is there anybody present that would like to speak for or against the application? Is the applicant present? Could you come to the podium, please? State your name and your address, please.
My name is Chip Wyatt with Barrier Island Engineering. Our address is 759 Folly Road, Charleston, South Carolina, 29412.
Okay, thank you. Does the commission have any questions?
Yes, so you proposed to put a mine on this property?
That's correct. So for the subject parcel to, I guess, west of that, I guess when we had started looking at this project, the GIS appeared to show it Agricultural Residential, so we actually have a mine permit in hand for that parcel. I understand that that is in fact CG. So that's, I guess, what we're trying to work through here. We recently subdivided the parcel that you have highlighted right now, carved out that corner lot for a future commercial development. The applicant is looking to extract sand from this subject site for the future expansion and improvements to I-26.
Is it designated to go there? Is this a DOT-type project?
The I-26 improvements, to my understanding, are a DOT improvement project. We've also got a DOT, excuse me, encroachment permit in hand for access to the site off Duncan Chapel. And in regards to the buffer, I'd be happy to submit the plan to council members to review, but we had to get a little creative. But the actual mining sites require pretty heavy buffering as well, specifically from the residential sites up fronting Duncan Chapel. So again, if we'd like to look at that, I'd be happy to provide some additional information.
So back to my question, this dirt would leave the site and go to the intersection, and the trucks would get on 26, and that's where the dirt would be used?
Correct. I don't know the exact stretch of 26, the mile markers, but the intended use of the material would be for the 26 improvements. So access either off Duncan Chapel. We also provided, when we subdivided, a 50-foot kind of access, that's that funny-looking leg coming off there, to provide direct access to 15 to minimize traffic on Duncan Chapel where there's some existing residential homes.
Any additional questions?
Yes, sir. Hey, Mr. Wyatt, you already have an ownership of the parcel to the west?
That's correct. The parcel to the west, the parcel highlighted and the parcel in the bottom right corner are all owned by Blythe Development.
So this is the baloney between the sandwich, I guess?
That's correct. The next, so that parcel down at the corner there, that's, the client intends to keep that General Commercial in perpetuity. I'm not sure if he's going to look to maybe sell off that parcel or develop it himself. But we would probably in the future look at coming back to now rezon the parcel to the west, depending upon the decision of the council.
What kind of timeframe are they expected to actively use the mine?
I think we're still, if I recall correctly, I think we're still a couple of years out on when that works actually. I think they're in the procurement stages right now of that 26 work. So it's not an immediate, an immediate.
But once it's approved and this were to move forward, what would the timeline be for the actual extraction and use?
I would think they may start pulling some material and stockpile it maybe midway through 2025.
Six-month span, year span?
I would think so. So the first mine permit we have in hand is just for, it's just for a five-acre block of that parcel, I guess, to the westerly parcel there. I think the actual pit ended up being with the spoils area and other aspects of the mine permit. I think the area that would be actually extracted would be about an acre and a half.
I actually have a question of staff. On the application document under acreage, it says that there's rezoning of 31.83 acres, yet when you look at the table down below, it says 0.61 acres and 1.07 acres. It's a little bit confusing. Right there. See it?
Yes, that's a typo.
What?
That's a typo.
Okay.
Apologies.
So what should be in the box, then?
31.83 acres.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments from the commission?
If I may, I may add one other item. So I guess the, if it decided that the council did not want to take this, downzone this to AR, we'd probably come back and potentially talk to staff about talking to a higher use than the CLI, because that does not allow mineral extraction. So we'd be open to pursuing that path as well.
I like that better personally. I think the AR just sits.
It opens up two doors.
Just sitting in an intersection of, you know, interstate. And I would think that would be a better fit, just personally.
Yeah, and originally, it's kind of strange. If you click on the GIS, it shows the property to the west as zoned AR. That's why we had a little bit of confusion, and that's why we actually, when we submitted this a little while back, if you click on that one to the left of that parcel.
The other big one?
Yeah, 070. And you look at that one, the GIS actually shows it as, it didn't used to have the shading, but the GIS actually shows it as Agricultural Residential, so we got a little confused there. Just if you're wondering why we pursued Agricultural Residential, because the idea was to rezone the middle parcel to Agricultural Residential and then maybe do a combination plat on the two.
So you have a mining permit in hand for the one on the west?
Oh, yes, sir. On 070.
That one.
Yes.
Would this be something staff would be willing to consider, working with the applicant on? I don't know if the substance of-
To rezon to something like industrial?
Yeah.
I think here is currently checking to make sure, resource extraction may not be in allowed use in industrial. It might just be limited to the AR District, but that's what we're double-checking.
It's allowed.
Oh, it's allowed, okay.
Okay, I know it's not in the light industrial.
Right, it would be allowed in the industrial district.
So it'd be heavy industrial?
Yes.
Being as close to the residential areas, I would rather see it zoned agricultural, residential than heavy industrial.
Yeah, right. I thought he said CLI, so that felt a little better. But heavy industrial brings all kinds of things up, things that we wouldn't want there.
Do you have the Comprehensive Plan by any chance?
I have the future land use map as a part of the package.
There you go.
Yeah, that works.
So again, this property and the entirety of this intersection is located within the employment-mixed-use, future land use designation, which does promote those high-intensity commercial, commercial light industrial, and industrial uses.
Is 0700, I believe that's the number you used on the west, is that currently AR?
No.
The GIS description is AR, but it turns out, we just discovered that it is actually General Commercial. There's a discrepancy between the GIS system and the, I guess, the true zoning of the parcel.
And you have a mining permit on it? And it's General Commercial?
Well, it's, we're not going to be allowed to proceed with the mine as long as it remains General Commercial, because that's not an allowed use for that parcel. Again, we submitted all the mine permits and the DOT encroachments permits probably about a year and a half ago, just to kind of work through that process with DES. And that's when we were under the impression that the description in the GIS was correct. And then I guess further discussions have happened between here and there, and we discovered, oh, it's General Commercial. So we're trying to get a little creative on, to see if we can figure out a way to get the sand extraction done on the site here.
So here's the thing, if the dirt don't come from right there, it's going to come from somewhere else, and we go have the same problem as trucks are hauling it further distance to the job site. So I don't see a problem with it.
Well, the issue is that they got a mining permit under the assumption that the zoning would allow for it under the general, or the agricultural. But because of mishap, whatever you want to call it, that it's not an allowed use.
It's a noncompliant use right now.
So the only thing that they could do would be to either go industrial, right?
Or AR.
Or AR.
Or AR, which industrial would be more of a following in the flume as opposed to AR.
I would like to clarify, this rezoning is just for this parcel, correct? The request only stated one TMS.
That's correct. So we have a mine permit for 070, and then we've got a mine permit in process for 048.
Is there a reason that 070 was not included in this request?
By the time we submitted this request here, we had a conversation with planning and zoning, and had that moment where we realized we did not research 070 thoroughly enough and that it is in fact General Commercial rather than the AR shown on the GIS.
Steph, correct me if I'm wrong, then the nonconforming, so they've got a permit that is-
I, yeah, the permit's through the state. We have not reviewed or issued a permit for a mine on either of these parcels.
So, and county, even though the state issues one, the county has the final say?
That is correct.
Okay.
So you would deny that based on the zoning?
Well, yeah, we would not be able to approve it based on zoning.
Right.
We did have some coordination with the county probably about a year and a half ago with Tim, I believe. I can, if we need to provide that correspondence as well, we'd be happy to do that.
Well, I agree with Bert. I mean, it's better for the sand to come from right there and put it out on the interstate. Now, we can't, you can't guarantee us you're going to go to the interstate with it. You might go over to Walmart or something.
Right.
You know, we can't guarantee that.
But again, it's not an approved zoning.
He's got to have a zoning change.
Correct. The mine permit we have right now is just a piece of paper.
You're out of business right now.
That's correct.
But if you get the zoning on 48, would you pursue the zoning on 7?
That's correct, yes. And we would do a combination plat on those two.
Right.
That's what we would propose, is to do a combination plat to make that one parcel under the Agricultural Residential.
We don't get the opportunity to downzone many parcels, so just leave that out.
Sir, did you say you were only going to mine an acre and a half of this land?
That, so there's a couple different types of mine permits. The one we have in hand right now is a general mine permit, which only allows for five acres of disturbance. Down the road, should we be able to combine these parcels under Agricultural Residential, we would pursue a larger mine.
And you've got a lot of land there. I mean-
I think it's about 70 acres just in 048, 070, and then the property down in the corner, I believe, is around 20. So it's close to 100 acres total.
Would the intention of the property owner be to dig it all up or just part of it? I mean, you know, you could put a pond somewhere and use it for detention later, maybe, or?
We do have wetlands and riparian buffer along the west edge of 070, so that area, probably half of 070 and a portion of 048 would be, would not be subject to the mining just due to environmental regulations and concerns.
Yeah, there's also potential encroachment issues with regard to the interstate and the ramps after the buffer zone there.
I guess my biggest concern is the fact that we spend a great deal of time and effort into planning ahead and thinking of the future land use map and where we want to, you know, try to keep the growth and development. And this is one of these areas that we worked pretty hard on to get there. If, and I agree, I understand where you're coming from about a downzoning, but to me, it seems like this is a better area for, you know, I mean, if you can get the industrial and then that would be where you're allowed to get that use and keep consistent with the zoning, that's what I would feel more comfortable with.
And no CLI, right? CLI does not allow, I'm saying mine.
I think those residents out there would be more appreciative to agricultural zoning than what is currently zoned now, anyway. They fought us pretty good when those couple pieces were re-zoned.
Well, there's nothing to say that you, I mean, thinking forward, if we took it to AR, okay, and you dug your sand, you could come back in five to seven years or whatever when you got through digging sand.
And re-upzone it.
And you could ask for a commercial zoning, which would make sense. And that would keep the sand trucks theoretically closer to the interstate.
You'd only have commercially usable land if you backfilled it all.
Well, he doesn't have to dig the whole site. He could leave some frontage for something, you know, like a hotel or something. I mean, it's a lot of land sitting there.
Problem is, I mean, I'm just thinking, if I owned it, I mean, I'd make the most out of my, you know, getting as much material as I could out of it, right?
So as an engineer, you'd dig it all up?
I'd dig it all up.
That's what this engineer would do, too. Y'all are killing me.
Well, that's a bird in the hand, too. A hotel, motel, whatever, may or may never come to that intersection.
Got a point.
We don't know that. More than likely it will, but it might be 30 years.
That showed the future growth boundary, that may show, yeah. So that kind of shows you the limits of that riparian area. So you can see that that large, like, kind of bottom-left corner of the 070, the property of the west, I think the GIS is probably not as accurate as the survey. We got pretty much that whole left side of that parcel, including that riparian.
Ready?
As you said, y'all would entertain a rezoning of industrial as well, though.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, we were just trying to think of a way, there are some residential properties up there. The mine permit required us to create berms rather than just buffers. So again, and this was under the assumption that the GIS was correct when we were working with the environmental consultants, so little wrench in the plans there.
Yeah. Do you have an exhibit that happens to show the residential nearby?
Yeah, the area, we'll show it right there. There's those two homes there, and then if you scroll southeast, there's another home right there, yes.
And there's more along that road.
Yeah.
Lot of nice houses along that road.
On Duncan Chapel.
And again, since this would be a, trying to think ahead, if they were to get a mining permit by rezoning to industrial dealing through the county, we could then put stipulations on working hour conditions, correct? Because it would be a new permit?
Right, so they would have to adhere to all the conditions we currently have for mining operations, which does include the limitation on hours.
Okay, given that we have a staff recommendation for denial, does anybody care to submit a motion?
I do. I'll make a motion to approve.
To approve the denial?
No.
I think you have to make a motion with regard to the denial, correct?
I'll make a-
The motion has to be in reference to the recommended denial.
No.
No.
Make any motion you want.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second it. So we can discuss it a little further.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hold on one second.
Yes.
So we want to make a, you're making a motion to change it to agricultural?
Yes.
AR.
As requested.
Approve his request.
As opposed to maintaining with the Comprehensive Plan and the future land use map.
Yep.
And the discussion, I mean, this is a back-and-forth for me. I just don't like taking commercial, 6% property off the tax books and throwing it over on AR so somebody can dig a bunch of sand. I mean, I seconded it so we could discuss it further, and I understand that the people that live up there, that live in homes, would rather see AR. But either way, whether it's industrial, AR, it's going to be a bunch of digging sand out there. And I think that it's a hard one, it's a very difficult one for me.
Okay, we have a motion and-
Can I make a comment as well?
Yes.
This is a question for you guys. If we do not approve it to AR and they bring it back and request for industrial, is there a timeframe they can do that? They can make one rezoning request per year. Okay. So if it, of course, this has to go through council process, so they can either choose to withdraw the request, but if it goes to council, if it gets approved or denied, they still have to wait a year before coming back with another request. So we could also deny the industrial, the change to industrial, when they brought that back as well, correct? And it could just stay exactly as it is? Yeah, you could. Just a question.
But we could also deny the AR and then come back and zone industrial today.
Here's that. Here's that, so if we deny AR today, he has to wait a year to bring back the industrial.
Not your board, if council chooses to deny.
That's the final say. We're just recommending to council, at the end of the day, council makes the decision.
And excuse me, one quick question. Is that a full calendar year or is that fiscal 2024? So theoretically, in a month and a half?
We would treat it as a 12-month period from the time of your application.
Okay, so it'd be 12 months from 9/24.
If council were to deny.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion and comment? All in favor of Bert's motion to approve zoning to AR, so signifying?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
The motion is defeated?
So the recommendation to council?
A new motion needs to be made. The motion failed. That does not indicate a denial. A new motion needs to be made.
Motion failed.
Motion failed.
Would council consider me allowing to withdraw this, revisit it with staff, and potentially resubmit as heavy industrial?
So we would need to defer that, then?
Correct.
I think you would prefer.
The motion's already been made. He had his chance.
So can he, so he can go to, he can defer it at council level, though, can he not?
Yeah, I mean, you can make, you can get through this board and then still get to council, a request to withdraw, request a deferral, or proceed for an approval or a denial.
Yeah, so Bert said, our motion has been recorded, therefore you would need to go to council at this point to defer.
Well, you have made a motion. That motion does not provide action for council right now. So you have a motion to approve. That motion has failed.
Correct.
So right now, you have no recommendation to council.
So I can make a motion to recommend that the client speak with staff to work on a potential rezoning for industrial.
It's either up or down. You either approve the motion, you approve his request or you don't. So we can't vote on it twice.
No, right now, you voted to approve. The motion to approve failed.
Right.
That does not result in a deferral because the motion, you would have to have a motion, I'm sorry, denial, you would have to have a motion to deny that is voted on positively by the board.
So then we, so I would make a motion that the applicant and staff, our recommendation is to counsel, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So our recommendation would be for council to have staff and the applicant work together on another rezoning of potentially industrial.
I think your motion needs to be to approve, to deny, or to conditionally approve.
Correct. It has to be substantive to the application request.
Or a deferral.
Or a deferral.
But if you deferral, it just comes right back to you.
Right, or we could table.
Right, in which case, when it comes back, it comes back to you all.
I know, but tabling is different than deferral. Do you get, do you understand? Deferral automatically comes back next month.
Right. Can y'all work that out in a month?
Yeah, I understand that, but I don't know why we're voting on it again. The motion didn't carry, so.
The motion doesn't carry, which means no action has been taken.
Because your motion was not with respect to the substantive application. Your motion was with regard to an AR zoning.
Y'all do what y'all want to do.
So I believe we need to have another motion, though, with regard to the status of the application. Do I have a motion with regard to the denial, recommendation from staff?
I don't know that we have to do that. I don't know that we have to do that, Mr. Chair. You, you made a recommendation and then it's on us to make a, a motion, which we did. Now, if you want to make another motion, but it should not really be related to the, what the staff recommended.
Correct. But your vote needs to be in the affirmative. So whichever motion that you make to approve or to deny or to defer, needs to be approved by the commission. Not a motion to defer.
To defer.
Can I make a motion to defer this item to the next meeting?
There you go.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, so signify?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, the motion, the application is deferred until the next meeting.
So we're going to talk about it again?
Y'all are welcome.
Yes, we're going to talk about it again.
We just did that.
Always need a woman to figure it out anyways.
And we're going to get her action.
Well, thank y'all for your time. I'm sorry to start you off with a complicated one. It should be smooth sailing from here on. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Why do I always substitute on the tough ones? Okay. Next item on the agenda. Subdivision applications, we have none. Street name requests, we have none. Old business. Okay. ZTA twenty five, twenty four dash zero seven text amendment to the Dorchester County zoning and land development standards ordinance number zero four dash thirteen is previously amended with respect to Article ten, section ten point four point eleven mineral resource extraction operations for the purpose of limiting the proximity of new mineral resource extraction operations from existing permitted operations. Kara, is this yours?
Yes, sir. So we talked about this last week in a workshop, went over the ordinance revision, which sets a buffer of two and a half miles from existing or permitted mines that would limit the opening of new mines. We discussed it. I, you know, I don't think we got any direction to make any changes to it. So we're just bringing it back to you all at this time for a recommendation to move forward with.
Mr. Chairman, I, based on our workshop and some other, you know, discussions, I, I believe that we make a motion to send this back to the, my understanding there is a traffic committee, correct? For all roadway and improvements and having towards the one cent?
Transportation.
Transportation.
Yes.
Transportation committee. Sorry, not traffic committee. I would make a motion that we send it back to the transportation committee for further evaluation.
I, well, do we have a second?
Discussion?
For input from them?
What would we be trying to accomplish by sending it back to them? To have them evaluate the, the roadway conditions, to help us better understand the, based off, was it Mr. Strange?
Strange.
Strange's memo that he sent to us. We, we don't have a valid way of evaluating existing road conditions as they are now to make, make decisions on how we're going to affect those roads and how we're going to affect those roads by additional mining, logging trucks, whatever have you. So I'd like for them to be able to give us an understanding of the baseline for the existing roads out there to determine if, you know, the roads can handle the additional loads. At the end of the day, right? We need some sort of baseline because the roads are inadequate.
So with regards to the application that's in front of you, are you requesting to defer for their input? Or to move forward with a recommendation for approval or denial pending their input?
I would say a deferral so that we can get their input on existing conditions and potential options to move forward.
Discussion time?
Discussion.
I think we saw in our workshop and that this is a more of a transportation issue than a mining issue. And I sup, I support what he says about sending it to the transportation committee. Because the natural resources that these mines are producing are going to all of the building that is being done on the interstate. You know, you got Google coming, you got all those houses up in St. George, you got everything that's going on down here, and all of it takes dirt. If it doesn't come from Dorchester County, it's going to come from somewhere. And they still go use the same roads to get it to the, to the job site. So I get it. I understand that, that the traffic is bad and they've torn up the roads, but we can't penalize the mines for, or the landowners for, for that fact. And everybody can agree to that, that, that it's the roads. So like I said, the the minerals that they want are in very specific areas of Dorchester County. And if we cut it down to two, two and a half miles between mines, immediately the price of the minerals is going to skyrocket. We got the cement plants over there that use the sand. Their input costs will go up. It's going to affect every road project from now on, so.
And then the, to add, in my opinion, the immediate devaluing of an adjacent property, whoever has a mining permit that's already in, you know, in process.
Correct. And these mining permits don't expire. So they, for a very little bit of money, you can hold on to a mining permit for a number of years just to keep somebody else from getting another mine. And so it's, I, I don't think this is the right way to go. I agree. We need to do something, but we, I think, I think we need to go down a different path.
And unfortunately, all that sand is right here. It's where, it's with us. It's not, you know, it's not in Ori County and it's not in, it's with us. It's in Dorchester County, you know? So it's there and it's, it's going to come up sooner or later, I think. But we do need to look out for these roads and safety.
Would you rephrase the motion just for clarification? Restate your motion?
Deferral. To make a motion to send this to before, defer it, to send it back to the transportation committee for evaluation and input.
To whom?
To transportation.
Planning Commission staff, correct?
Planning Commission staff. And to us.
Okay, now
Mr. Ackerman, that's for the roads, right? Evaluation of the, of the roads that these
That's correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, so signify?
Aye.
All opposed, sign. Motion passes.
Positive.
Okay. Let's see. New business. Modification of land development standards. Modification, section twenty point one point one A regarding the proposed subdivision of lots off an easement in the suburban area. Property owner, Celia Simmons, applicant James Simmons. Location, Danbury Drive, TMS number one four five dash ten dash zero one dash zero forty two. Who on staff is going to handle that one?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We received this application to allow the subdivision of this property where it does not but a public or private right of way, but an existing easement. The applicant here has installed a septic system and purchased a mobile home with the intent to move it onto this new lot, which was intended to be created. The lot will be jointly owned, would have been joint, or is jointly owned. They're splitting it for two separate structures. When we received the subdivision application, we had to deny the application because it does not meet the requirements of twenty point one point one A. This part of the ordinance allows for subdivision off of an easement only in rural districts. This is a suburban district. We don't have the authority to approve any of this deviation. Nor can the Board of Zoning Appeals hear a request for variance from chapters twenty and twenty one. The only process available here is for a modification as outlined in section twenty two of the ordinance outlined in the staff report. The applicant provided an application which is attached to your packet, providing responses to the required criteria for considering a modification. We reviewed those questions and answers and provide the following findings. A, that the modification will not be detrimental to the public health, safety and general welfare of the county. B, that the modification will not adversely affect the reasonable development of adjacent property. C, the modification may be considered justified as there is not possible a way to obtain access to right of way for the property and the property has been split between two areas which may be topographic or special condition unique to the property which may prevent development in compliance with the code. D, the justification does not necessarily generally apply to similar developments that meet the standards of which the modification is sought. And E, that the modification may be considered consistent with the objectives of this ordinance and may not have the effect of nullifying the intent or purpose of this ordinance. Modification process is sort of an awkward process for the planning commission. We've dealt with it a number of times. So that's our best approach at looking at the questions that are provided in the ordinance. Based on these findings presented in our analysis, staff finds the application meets the requirements for a modification and therefore recommends approval of the application.
Did you receive any public comments before the?
Not a public hearing, so there is no notification.
Okay. Is there anybody who would like to speak for or against this application? Is the applicant here? No. Does the commission have any questions of staff?
Staff recommends approval.
Recommends approval.
Yeah. Do I hear?
I'll make a motion to follow in staff's recommendation for approval.
A second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda. B, modification of land development standards. Modification of section two oh five point one B. This is requiring sidewalks on both sides of the street. In new residential developments and modification from section twenty point four point two maximum cul-de-sac length requirements. Property owner, M J L Development, applicant Elliot Locklear. Location, Colkit Street, TMS number one twenty nine dash double zero dash double zero dash zero fifty seven and one twenty nine dash zero four dash zero nine dash zero zero five, zero zero eight and zero zero nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is probably a familiar property to the planning commission. There initially was going to be a trailer home subdivision park here in an MUC zoning. They changed the zoning to R two to allow for single family development. There is, and this is more common practice for our modification to go through this process. This bottom kind of area of the subdivision is going to hold a retention pond. There's also floodway down there, floodplain down there that they're trying to avoid crossing. Because of that situation, they're not able to have a connection, which our street code kind of encourages connections, limits the length of cul-de-sacs. They're asking for a modification to allow for a longer cul-de-sac than the code would allow. The code here allows a maximum length of two hundred and fifty feet for this road type. They're asking for two separate cul-de-sacs on one side, two hundred and ninety one feet, the shorter one, and the other side, four hundred and fifty nine feet. This road here is an extension of Powell Drive and does not require review as a modification. The other part of the subdivision that they're looking at a modification from, when they initially started design of this, we only required sidewalks on one side of the street. So this really didn't come up. It came up later as they were looking at finishing up this subdivision. They don't own right to this property here, but they are putting in this extension of the street, Powell Drive, as I mentioned. They're proposing just to put sidewalks along the area that they're developing and not along the area that they are not developing. Not sure. I have strong feelings one way or the other. We went through the questions and I'll, and I'll provide that for you here. So again, two modifications on one application for one subdivision here. The first modification, staff finds their answers to questions, as we noted, would be consistent with the objective of, of the ordinance, do not just necessarily apply to similar developments. I think the idea that they're avoiding environmental considerations, there's a topographic issue there that's supportable to not extend that road through there and have the longer cul-de-sacs. On the sidewalk, I think it can be said that this is a unique situation where they don't have development right to this. If it were to develop in the future, that sidewalk could be placed at that time. So we're not, we're not strongly feeling that, that is necessarily needed to have, be done at this time. So based on the findings presented in our analysis in your staff report, we believe the application meets the requirements for a modification. Therefore, staff recommends approval of both modifications requested.
Were there any comments submitted at all?
No comments.
Okay. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak for or against the application? Is the applicant here? Could you come up and state your name and address, please?
Name is Elliot Locklear. My office is at one twenty eight South Main Street in Somerville.
Thank you. Commission have any questions of the applicant?
You said that southern, where your detention is, that south of the detention, that's wetlands? Is that?
No, it's just, it's floodplain. The floodplain boundary, you can see that kind of going across the rear ends of the lots. That's the, your flood boundary. What, the intent of this was to stay out of the, the flood zone with homes.
Is it AE or, is it AE or, okay.
Now, there is, there is a floodway, as he stated, that
Yeah.
goes through where the creek actually is and crosses Colkit.
Okay.
There's not an existing, this is for staff, there's not an existing sidewalk along OT Wallace, is there?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so, yeah.
Any further questions?
We wouldn't be coming out to OT Wallace. We're going, Colkit to the north is the, is the road we're connecting to and same answer.
Yep.
There's no existing sidewalk there.
Yeah.
Right.
Any further questions from the commission?
I would make a comment. I like the fact that this is infill. You know, we're not going out. This is right near here, so. I like that fact. And it seems like the sidewalk request is reasonable.
And this, not having the sidewalk on the other side doesn't preclude requiring one should that area be developed?
No, it's still, if that area developed, it would be required to do, if they subdivided. If they develop it with a single family home, that would be the issue. There wouldn't be a requirement for a sidewalk necessarily for that.
Okay.
It is an existing single family home that fronts on to Colkit.
Okay.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Motion carries. Okay. ZTA twenty four dash oh eight text amendment to Dorchester County zoning and land development standards. Ordinance number zero four dash thirteen is amended with respect to article number seven, zoning and development suburban district regulations. Article eight, zoning and development subdivision, suburban transition district regulations. Article nine, zoning and development rural district regulations. And article ten, section ten point seven, cluster subdivision development for the purposes of updating maximum impervious surface requirements to align with existing for the purposes of updating maximum impervious surface requirements to align with existing minimum lot sizes. Who's got this one?
That would be me. So this is a text amendment that staff is initiating based off of a lot of issues that have come up as we've been reviewing the, a lot of cluster subdivision plans that have been coming into our office for review. And this is in regard to impervious surface. In these developments that are smaller lots, currently, the cluster subdivision option does not address impervious surface. That means that it reverts back to the maximum impervious surface in the base zoning districts. So for example, in an R2 cluster, the minimum, the smallest minimum lot size is 4,000 square feet. But it reverts back to the maximum impervious surface of a base R2 zoning, and that maximum impervious surface is only 50%. And on a 4,000-square-foot lot, that's not a lot of space to be covered with impervious surface. It could absolutely limit property owners from potentially being able to construct homes, patios, pools, and other accessory structures. Similarly, we found in townhome developments where dwelling units are attached, and there is no minimum lot size, the maximum impervious surface of 50% is just not sufficient for that type of development. So we have amended the sections where the cluster, we've amended the cluster section and then amended the R3 and R4 and MUC sections, maximum impervious surface. That's where townhome development is allowed. In addition to that, we did reformat all the other sections. Those sections did not change substantively. We simply reformatted them. Those impervious surfaces, maximum impervious surface regulations will stay the same. But the actual percentage changes occurred in the cluster, R3, R4, and MUC districts. And so we bring these for your review.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have, I do have one comment I'd like to make on the percentages. Just, this is from an engineer's perspective now, living in a subdivision, where I've had to deal with this type of issue. I live in a community where most of the lots are half acre to an acre, okay? Single-family units. Most of the houses occupy, including driveways, about 25% of the lot. With pools and/or patios, they have traditionally been less than 50% of the lot. What we have found after they put the improvements in is that they can't control the runoff onto adjacent properties. And we've had to go back in where we've approved swimming pools and told people they've had to put French drain systems in to tie into a stormwater system because the 30% number, or 40% number, or 50% number was too high. So realize that this may not necessarily solve the problem. And our problems are topography and soils. If it's hilly and it's clay, they're not gonna drain properly to the subsurface. They're gonna drain onto the neighbor's lot.
So it's all impervious?
What?
So it's all impervious?
Essentially, it is. That's just a comment.
I'll give you a second on that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, adding on to what you were saying, Mr. Chair, it seems that, you know, you, I'm in favor of this because I think we're out of kilter with 50%, 15%. But it seems to me that there are other options with you can put some types of hardscaping in that can let water go between it. So there's some options out there, and I sure certainly hope we encourage that as we go forward, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, so signify? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Adoption of the 2025 meeting schedule. I guess that's yours, Mr. Anderson.
Yep. This just continues on with our second Thursday of the month, four o'clock. No changes to that, no conflicts with any holidays or anything, so we're just bringing this back to you for an official approval.
Okay. Do you have any idea of how many meetings might be up in St. George?
It's gonna depend on which applications come in for the St. George area, really.
Okay, understood. Do I have a motion to approve the schedule?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 schedule.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item. There is no report from the chairman. Report from the planning director.
Just to follow up on the email I sent out about the continuing education. I sent a couple sessions. Josh, I sent you your orientation training sessions. If you're not able to get your hours through the sessions that I've sent, there are other options. So I can email out some additional opportunities we have until the end of the year for you to get your three hours of continuing education done. Just let me know. And if you have completed any of your videos, please send me your certificate of attendance.
Could I ask the planning director to resend those out?
I can do that.
Certain people up here might need to see them again.
I can do that.
And I've done some additional wetlands and drainage stuff, so I might send you what I've done.
Yeah, just send me your certificates of attendance.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to point out that I am in good standing for, just for the record.
King for a day.
Good for you.
He's the Jay Byers of the group up here.
Public comment. Are there any public comments at this point? Public comments? I guess there's only one item left on the agenda.
Adjoined.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to point out that it's 4:56, almost 4:57, and Mr. Carter would be reasonably pleased, but not totally pleased.
I did comment that easiness was in the eye of the beholder.
That's right.
We are adjourned.
Very good.
Thank you. Have a good Thanksgiving, everybody. Oh, I need to sign stuff, don't I?